I've got about an hour of daylight left here. I'm in Iowa. About sixteen hours from home, headed west. Been doing between seventy and eighty miles an hour since yesterday morning. Feels like I'm getting closer because there's more construction and there's more traffic, so I'm I'm more comfortable that as I get close to the Mississippi, things will things will slow down and I'll grind my way back to Batavia. So hopefully I'll be back in town tomorrow afternoon late.
Just keep it uneventful.
That's my goal. I've had a I've had a very nice time surrounded by wilderness. But at the same time, appreciating all of the things that we have conveniently where we live. It's nice to think about living in the wilderness. But I gotta tell you, it's pretty pretty scary when you gotta drive thirty minutes to get a signal so you can call somebody to see if they need help or not. And and knowing that everything that you could possibly need is at least an hour away. Creates a different mindset. There's no immediate satisfaction there. There's no immediate response to anything. And interestingly enough, it seems as though their helicopter medical service that was run by subscription has been declared defunct. So now, anything that happens in the wilderness when the weather is bad is is unavailable for for a lot of the people that live there, so. Interesting. It's a big change. I look forward to coming back where things are convenient and close by.
I think sometimes Greg, people take things for granted, you know? You get out west and and it's definitely a different world.
Well, it's it's certainly different, knowing that you just can't run to a store and pick something up. They're just it's the closest store is twenty-six miles down the highway and it takes fifteen minutes to get to the highway. And then you gotta drive slow because there's a lot of animals in the road and the weather's not always great. And they just don't plow the roads at night. They just wait till daylight and send a plow truck through. If it's too deep to drive through, you're expected to wait until the road's plowed. It's just a a whole different lifestyle. Look a little bit to manage that. But fortunately, everybody came through and I just ten minutes ago received an email from my sister stating that she has significantly improved today over yesterday and she's able to actually stand up and walk around without discomfort. So that's the first time in twenty-six days for her that she's had that. For that, I'm I'm very thankful. I was pretty scared for her. She's the healthiest one in our clan and I'm just absolutely stunned that this disease took her down to a near-death experience. It was it was excruciating to watch and to be a part of that. And not be able to help, not be able to help and not having any resources anywhere near that can help. It's it's a challenge for people who have spent that much time in healthcare. And she's very familiar with the process and knew all the symptoms. She was a COVID screener for weeks before she retired. To just be that reduced and to just just see someone that's vibrant and strong be reduced to a to a shaking, fever-ridden person who can't speak was an eye-opener for me. Hard to read about it. It's a it's a real eye-opener for me. They're having the same situation in in Park County, Wyoming that we're having in in Batavia, Genesee County, just a never anticipated spike and no real rhyme or reason to how it impacts people, so. Anyway, on to business. I'm happy to be back. I'm looking forward to getting into the good graces of Mrs. Post and catching up on all the honeydew stuff that I left in the wake of this.
Oh, I'm sure the list is long.
Well, yeah, and and the bad news is her sister's been staying with her for a month, so I'm well, one didn't think of, the other one did, I'm sure. Never my intention. I don't think I've ever taken this much time off at one time in my life away from family and business and that and I I'm I'm cringing, actually. I'm pretty tense. First thing I'm gonna do is get a massage before I go home, I think. I don't think I'm gonna be able to walk in that without without some some anyway, how are things at the how are things at the town of Batavia? I've been trying to keep up as best I can by reading the email. I haven't been I haven't it doesn't seem as though I've needed to respond. Everybody seems to have taken their tasks well in hand. I've talked to Teresa, Heidi regarding court security. Seems as though that's everybody, everybody up to speed on that, on what the proposal is, and everybody's okay with that.
Yep, yep, yep.
Okay, the next thing is our employee policy on fire and emergency calls. We haven't had any discussion in that in the past. It's generally been accepted that people that have been volunteering for the fire service have been able to answer calls as needed using their discretion and good judgment. When I get back into the fold of things, we'll probably sit down, but just any questions from the board as to where we think this is gonna head? If not, then I guess I'll get more familiar with what the what the situation was that caused us to be in a general.
Yeah, I agree.
Well, and and that's why I'm sitting in the meeting tonight. We were pretty much policing ourselves as far as the calls go. And we had one of the guys kind of kind of abused the situation a little bit. Responded to a call from Alabama all the way to Virgin, and I think this is what's been driving that situation, why it's come up to the board.
Well, I understand the situation, Paul, but I I don't think that we can we can find any fault with anybody until we reevaluate our policy. I mean, if it's not clearly spelled out, one can whatever one needs to, so. I'm not ready to put any allegation or dispersions on anyone, and we do need to reaffirm the policy and you can you can certainly be included in that as we move forward. I mean, the one thing that's yeah, one thing that's vital is that we can't be arbitrary in any of our decisions and we really need to focus on it and and twenty-five or thirty years ago, when we established this, who would have guessed that we would have encompassed as many geographic areas as we are with our staff? And same goes whether it's water or highway or assessing or any other services we provide. We have a number of extraordinary and competent people in our employ who feel strongly that volunteering for the community is a part of their fabric and we don't want to reduce that. And certainly don't want to penalize people. So I appreciate the candor and you'll certainly be included in the updated policy. It's a good problem to have, to have as many people on staff that are volunteering their time and their expertise for their communities. In a way, it's a wonderful problem to deal with. So thank you all for your support in that. On to cyber insurance. I don't know if you all read the correspondence back and forth between our broker or agent and the the premiums. I know the original premium seemed a little high for the coverage, but after we got additional rebates back, it certainly reduced the price. I don't think that was clarified in the initial presentation. Are we still considering that or how would you like me to proceed?
Well, from my understanding, it was gonna lower the premiums that we were paying quite a bit and it wasn't it's an increase that they were originally talking of more than three thousand dollars.
I think it was closer to two after they after they did that tally, right?
Yeah, and I and I guess we didn't really have all of the numbers and it had taken some time to go back and forth with the with the insurance responsibilities being redesignated to different staffers. It's taken a couple of months to get caught up and get everybody comfortable. Or as comfortable as they could be as we find our find our way here. Teresa's done a remarkable job for forever getting quotes and securing all of that, and that since has been more of my responsibility and in my wheelhouse and Heidi and I have gone back and forth and it seems to me to bring added value and added protection to the community. As careful as I am, I think we all we all concede that there are lapses in some of this and the opportunity for fraud is ever-present and continuing to increase. Certainly, I think money well spent, but
I agree.
That's just my opinion. Before we proceed, I'd like to get the consensus before we put it on the on the agenda.
No, I agree with that and I I think with the price where it's at with the deducting of a thousand or whatever it was, it seems more reasonable. And the expense to not, you know, the liability expense to not have it is probably not not worth turning it down.
Teresa, would you like that? Yeah, put 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 that on the agenda. We'll we'll try to get a firm quote, get everything tightened up for the meeting in December.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
All right, reach out to Heidi and
Will do.
We'll try to get that done. And you have you have some information on the DMV agreement?
Yeah, the DMV agreement, which we do annually, January first during the whole year. They sent back the draft, which basically it's the same agreement, we changed the dates. However, their concern is they they'd like to still have us proceed approving it and then send it on to them for signatures. They don't know if they will be using it because of the way the times are. Because obviously, they haven't been able to use it since last March, so they still had requested us to proceed with it. Don't know if they are gonna end up proceeding on their end, but so I just wanted to bring it to your attention.
Are they are they are they paying for that, whether they use it or not? Is that a yearly thing?
It is a yearly thing. They did pay all of last year. There was no request for reimbursement or anything. How this will handle if they don't end up, you know, using the facility, so. I mean, I can get clarification on that if you'd like, but.
No, I was just curious. I guess if they're paying, then it don't make a big deal as long as we got the money.
So would you do you want to add it to the board to the?
Yeah, I would add it to the agenda.
Okay.
You want to update us on the joint youth situation?
Yes, the joint youth, generally, we pass that usually gets on the agenda like in October, November. I delayed it and I talked to the youth director and asked her, I said, you know, generally, we have it passed by the end of the year. You know, what is the status? And of course, that's kind of the same thing in limbo. But they are still trying to prepare and get ahead of it to try to hopefully be able to resume youth programs next year. And she says, if you guys can pass it now or early in the first part of next year, that would be wonderful instead of waiting until the last minute. They are working now with the city of Batavia, trying to get contract out with another organization, say maybe like the Y or putting a putting a bid together and see who can do that. But they still would need the support from the municipality for these programs. So would you like it added to this or?
I would think so.
Sorry I'm late. And obviously, last year, they they did not have the youth program. I mean, I shouldn't say last year, this past.
This year, yeah.
Good evening, Patty.
Hello.
Nice of you to join us.
Yeah, I just got our dog out of the hospital and John's taking care of him right now, so I'm a little frazzled.
So.
How does the youth program work, Teresa? Do we pay them? Isn't it like twelve or I mean, is that you said they didn't have it this past year? Do they still use the money or or are we giving them money or how's that?
We did give them money last year. Yes, I shouldn't say last. I keep saying referring to last year. It is twenty for twenty twenty.
Well, we're all ready to get rid of twenty twenty anytime we can.
Greg, where are you? Are you in town or are you out west still?
I'm in actually, I'm in a very small dot on a map of Iowa and it is an outlet mall. Probably should have I should have probably panned the outlet mall in the middle of Iowa. I mean, it's a wide spot. It's got a gas station and a giant outlet mall with all kinds of stores that are open for shopping, but not a lot of cars parked in a parking lot.
So are you driving home then, I take it?
Yes, I've been driving home. I left yesterday morning early. I've been averaging seventy to eighty miles an hour where they let you drive that fast, but now I'm in traffic, so. I pulled off and as soon as it's dark, I'll get back on the road and try to I'm about a thousand miles from home.
Oh, boy.
But the weather's good and the roads are clear and I'm happy to be on my way. The next item is on the assessment aid.
Can we go back to the youth? I just want to know if I need to add it to the agenda.
Oh, I thought we said yes.
Okay, then I missed it. Okay, thank you.
The assessment aid is is still in progress. We're still looking at a candidate to replace Joe McAluso, who retires at the end of this month. And that is all tied to the contract with Arroy, which I'll be meeting with the supervisor. It's not at the end of this week, early next week, to try to get resolution on that. There's still a couple of things that need to be ironed out apparently. So that's what I have on that. I'll keep you apprised as things move. The rest of the items are pretty much boilerplate things that typically we review annually. Any questions on any of them? One thing that will be involved possibly with the fair housing policy is the section three plan. Have you all had a chance to kind of take a look at that?
Except for the CD BG grants, isn't it?
Yes, correct. New obligations and certainly some new things. Heidi, Steve Mountain, Teresa, Andy Meyer, as well as our partners at the EDC have all been working through this and and making sure that we're up to up to stuff. Our experience has been that midway through a grant, they'll come out with a whole bunch of new requirements and things that you're obligated to do after the fact. Kind of like the payroll protection money that was distributed to businesses that's not gonna bankrupt everybody. It's probably seventeen or eighteen amendments after the grant money's been been distributed that, oh, by the way, you have to do things that you're not able to do or have no means to do. So far, we've been compliant and we've worked diligently to make sure that our ducks are in a row and that we have the things. And Andrew Meyer is gonna be on the phone, I believe, at what time, five-thirty, Teresa?
Yes, he said he would he had another meeting and he would do his best to join in around five-thirty.
So he'll be on in a few minutes. Just have answers to any of your questions regarding sector three to give a brief overview. I think we're in pretty good shape by the sounds of the meeting that I had with him and Steve earlier. I think we'll I think we'll be okay. Patty, you'll be more involved because it does involve housing.
Yes, and our our first housing meeting is gonna be January now because everything got kind of pushed back because of COVID. But we just get to do schedules, so anything, I don't know, you may need it before that, though.
Well, I've also got a resident on Rose Road who left a voicemail. I returned his phone call. I haven't had him call me back yet, but very concerned about his his response from Spectrum and other state and federal agencies. He's trying to get high-speed internet just like Teresa. And so he's reached out to me and left a message and I've returned his call, but I may refer him to you, Patty. I mean, it's I'll give him the conversation that we have that, you know, Spectrum Spectrum's managed to subdue the federal government and the courts of the land. It's unlikely the town of Batavia can pull him into providing cables.
Yeah, there's not really a whole lot we could do.
But at the same time, I think we do need to keep keep pressure on and keep it relevant and and make sure that we're at least supportive of higher-speed internet throughout the rural community. I think it's been long overlooked and long underfunded.
Yeah, well, I know they're starting to do broadband in other areas, so, you know, I would love it to be on the list, but I don't think it's.
Well, let's start researching to see how we can get on that list. Anything else before Andrew comes on?
Real quick, I had a conversation with Tom Williams today about them not being in session and I know we've got an issue with one of the court clerks being able to work from home. I expressed to him, we were under the impression they weren't allowed, as per New York State, to work from home. He fired off an email to me that is a memo and I'm just opening it now from Unified Court Systems in Albany that they can.
They can.
Yeah, I assume it's this is dated. Well, this is May sixth, which I can't think contradicts an email you received, correct, Mr. Post?
Yeah, it definitely contradicts the one that that we have in receipt, so.
Let me take a look at this. I'll forward it on to everybody. But if we do, if they do have the opportunity to work from home, we do have the issue with one of the clerks not getting internet. And we talked about providing a Wi-Fi to let them work from home if necessary, so.
Yeah, that wouldn't be a problem as long as they were allowed. Our understanding was that they were forbidden to do that originally. But that's been relaxed or revised. And to be quite candid, those girls spent a couple of days preparing to space cases out so that they didn't have more than X number of cases per hour and less than twenty-four hours after they had that rescheduled list, they were informed that they can't have anybody in the building. It's a it's a one day after another, they're just this complete reversal of policy, all in writing and all all absolutely mandated and repercussions if you don't follow it, but it just changes so drastically. I don't know how anybody can keep up with it.
I agree. We'll have to check the date on on the stuff we received. This is dated May sixth and I'll just read the one paragraph. If the municipality has provided VPN remote access, where possible, court clerks should work virtually from home. Subject to review and consideration by the district administration judge regarding the need to have more than one clerk access to court facility. Authorized issues granted for one court clerk at a time to return to the court facility. So it's I'll have to go through all this. It sounds like they'll be allowed to do that. If they do want to work from the office, they're allowed, but only one at a time. But I'll I'll read and forward it on to everybody.
Well, I know back then, they couldn't even open the mail. It was
That's amazing.
in my vault. Really?
That's unbelievable.
It's changed so much. I have a question because I missed the first part, but John got a phone call today that, you know, they were gonna cancel court tomorrow because they couldn't get a hold of everybody. They were gonna run court anyway one day. Is that still correct?
I thought, no, I think they're coming tomorrow to turn anybody away to turn anybody away and explain to them how to send it in via mail.
Yes.
That's I told that was that came with my conversation with Tom today.
Yeah, because they couldn't get a hold of everybody?
Yes. Oh, yeah, so they've got to come in and turn people away, so they're
John wants to say something if that's
Oh, sure.
Okay.
I'm baby-titting this little puppy then. What I had heard today when the girls called up and everything, it happened when COVID first kicked in. What's gonna happen is the people that haven't been contacted today, we will greet them at the door. If they have a traffic ticket, we will take their ticket. We will give it to the town prosecutor. Town prosecutor and girls will get a hold of him by get a hold of them by mail and and they'll deal it that way. It was just so close. It happened the last time COVID kicked in and the courts closed. I went to Elbitown Court with them. They could not close. They could not close the court, so we just dealt with everybody at the door. That's what we're and I do have, just to let you know, Greg, I do have Jerry Casper back on board. I do have Rich Shaw that you guys are gonna implement into the thing. And the other two guys are still out on COVID. I told them what they had to do. If Greg Shaw or Greg Steele was taking care of his father-in-law, what he has to do is get Dave out of the hospital. From that day on, you do a fourteen-day and after the fourteen days and everything, he gets tested and he's back to court. Steve Friday was taking care of his son who caught COVID. Steve wound up in the hospital and he will probably not be back the whole month of December. Now, when I heard from the girls today and everything, sixty days or not, we're gonna be shut down for two months, is what I heard.
John, you're gonna be there tomorrow because to assist the girls. Sorry, I just I just have visions of people driving out and being angry because they just drove twenty minutes or whatever.
I am gonna be there and I do have, just to let you know, I do have Jerry Casper coming back. He is still on the books, even though he took a took a job with the county. That had that's ended and Jerry's back in the books. Heidi Librock has got him still on the case. He's still in the system. He's gonna come and come back and see us, how we deal with COVID and the new setup. He's gonna shadow me tomorrow morning and once he does that, he's gonna be back full strength. We're gonna have you'll you'll have security.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. It was touching go there for a while. It was he was like, oh, my God. So we're good. So we're good, okay.
Nice.
Okay, Teresa, is Andrew back, is he on the line yet?
He is not, I'm gonna check with him, see what
Well
How is he feeling, is he better?
No, this is Andrew.
Our attorney.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I will uh, I'll take this opportunity to share a text that I got yesterday while I was driving, I, I read it last night uh from Andrew Young. It's, it's brief. It's uh FYI, I have attended all hours of the judge training thus far and I anticipate that I will have my certificate by the end of day tomorrow as planned. So I would expect that he would know by today um that he's got his certificate. Also as planned, he will work with Tom and get as much knowledge as he can over the next three weeks. He took his oath of office with Teresa and he's been in contact with Heidi. He's feeling much better, he's just tired and he hoped um that all is well with you. So that I got from Andrew, um and I'll reach out to him when I'm back in town.
Yeah, and Tom said he was, you know, happy talking to Andrew and he seems revved up, ready to go and uh, you know, jumping in with both feet, so.
Yeah, I would expect nothing less, Andrew.
Yeah.
Um they've been, they've been a pretty powerful partner in uh in my experience, so looking forward to having them in the, in the hoop. While we're waiting for Andrew Meyer, any other general topics of conversation? Are you guys uh all geared up and ready for this uh this situation? I, I could use a little uh background, I have had very little news um available to me. I still cannot seem to get my uh other than the, what I'm reading on the internet, um any real grip on what's going on in Genesee County with COVID or what the, what the status is or how likely we are to see additional closures. So what's, what's happening, what's the tone of the community there?
I think we're headed towards more closures personally.
I do too, Cuomo is going to base it on hospitals, though, he's really looking at our hospitals. And if the hospitals get overrun, that's when he's going to do more shutdowns. We aren't really in yellow or orange or anything, we're, we're kind of limbo, we're, we're nothing right now. I think that's why cases are going up, because people are just going about their day, doing whatever they want. And he's not going to do anything until the hospitals tell them. Hospitals here are good right now, I heard U of R have bought, brought a lot of their patients to Batavia. So floor two and three right now are all COVID people and they're not people, they're from Rochester.
I thought there were seventeen hospitalizations, I thought I read in our
Could be ours, maybe our local people, they're not telling you about the people that are there from outside Genesee County, I don't think.
The seventeen, the seventeen hospitalizations were out of the twenty-one positive people yesterday, seventeen of them were hospitalized.
Oh, okay, yeah, I got you, yep, that's right.
So it seems like, it seems, it seems like more people are being hospitalized than it was in the beginning.
Yeah, and, but not going to ICU, which is a good thing, there's a lot more hospitalizations, but they seem to be taking care of them and kind of sending them home to recover. Whereas not going to ICU before, it was, you're in, you're in ICU, you die, you know, and now they've got a handle on how to treat them, I guess, a lot better. So it's not quite as bad.
Well, what, well, I mean, so what's the capacity of our, of our hospital?
I don't know exactly, I don't know, I really
Well, we need to find out, I mean, it's, it's imperative that we know.
They don't say much on the um, you know, they don't give you those numbers, because I think they asked today, the governor, if he could give us a, they did ask that.
Our hospitals, our hospitals are not at fifty percent, yeah.
No, no, I think
And they figure if they get close, if they get close to uh capacity, they will cancel all of uh
Elective surgery.
Yeah. Electric surgeries and that will free up another twenty-five percent.
Yeah, here's my question, though, I guess, and I, oh, I'm being, if they're bringing people from outside Genesee County, doesn't that take up our beds? I mean, I don't understand how, but U M, U of, U of R is all a big unit and they're going to want them to move patients around? And I think that's why they brought them here.
Yeah, but there's, there's no residency requirement or anything like that for hospitals, it's not like there, there are beds, you know, it's not like it's a jail or something.
They need beds, they need beds, I
There's people that are positive in Genesee County, they're in hospitals in Monroe County, too.
Yeah, sure.
Andrew.
There's Andrew.
Now, hi, Andrew.
Hi, everybody.
Hello.
Hey, Andrew.
Long time no see, how've you all been?
I know.
Good.
We're hanging in there.
Greetings, greetings from the middle of Iowa, Andrew.
Hello, oh my goodness, video and all, Greg. Thanks for uh your flexibility and my timing here, I'm, I'm, I'm squeezing in, my being with you here between a meeting and church, so I have, I gotta hit the road in about twenty minutes. So um but well, uh I know that we wanted to talk here, you had some questions, so um and Teresa and I just talked about me jumping in and uh um joining when I, when I could, so thanks for your flexibility.
Well, thank you for taking the time, uh we've attended to all of the other business we have on our agenda, so if you want us, just give us a kind of a similar description and narrative on the Section Three that you did for us this week on our attorney meeting. And then our counsel can ask questions if they have any.
Great, so um uh our grant writer had come up with a Section Three plan, which is a CBGB requirement uh in order to get CBGB funds. Uh Section Three is a section of federal law that establishes some guidelines for uh how to um set up contracts and uh award contracts where CBGB funds are involved. So where the town gets CBGB funding to be used for certain purposes, the seat, the Section Three plan governs how that CBGB funding is to be spent and on what kinds of projects. And there are certain types of projects for certain purposes and at certain amounts that trigger Section Three requirements, which basically uh require the town to give certain preferences to people of low income on some basis or another. Um there's a lot of examples we could get into, but I'll leave those aside for now. And in, in, but in order to fulfill the CBGB requirements for us to be even eligible for CBGB funding, we do need to have that Section Three plan in place in the event we ever get a covered project where we have to abide by all those Section Three requirements, we have a plan to deal with it, we have a policy. Steve had indicated that some, some, some concern and and Teresa had sent around some information about the impact this might have on some prior arrangements where we structured pilots with low-income housing projects and wondered if this Section Three CBGB plan would impact what we've done historically regarding those low-income housing pilot projects. The, so, so what I did is I looked at the CBGB Section Three draft plan that Perry Sikkerman put together, our grant writer, and I compared that against the various pilots that we had done for projects like Big Tree Plan. And um I did note a few important points. Uh the Section Three plan arises under federal law and pertains uh only to certain projects where the town gets CBGB funding and disperses that, that funding. Um however, with the low-income housing projects, that's a different, that, that might involve CBGB funding, it might not, but basically we're talking about a different bucket. Uh we're talking about um a, a pilot project that we enter into with the developer under provisions of state law, not, not federal law. And those are governed by completely different rules. So in a nutshell, the Section Three plan that Sikkerman has prepared um may be adopted by the town and it would have no impact on any of our uh past or potentially future arrangements for providing a pilot agreement to low-income housing projects. The two can coexist peacefully, there's no conflict between the two. There might be a convergence at times if one project involved both, both sources of funding. And namely, if one, for instance, if there's a low-income housing project that wants a pilot program uh under state law and if the town was a pass-through for CBGB funds for that same project, there might be some overlap there. But even then, the two laws wouldn't be, that the two policies or practices would not be in conflict, they could coexist. So I don't see any impact on our, on our prior arrangements, I don't see there being uh anything we need to change going forward concerning those pilots merely by adopting the Section Three plan. So I would say, go ahead, adopt the Section Three plan as it, as it prepared by Sikkerman. I have reviewed it, approved it to form, have no concerns or questions. It's a pretty standard form plan, Sikkerman is prepared for other communities, I think it'll be just as fine and workable and serviceable for Batavia. Um and it won't change anything else we're doing or have done historically.
Andrew, I have one question, the way it was presented to us and the way it has the um the state on the top of that, homes and community renewal, do we want to leave it like that on that letterhead like that?
Th- that's a, in my mind, a, a formatting question, I, we wouldn't have to, we could put it on our own letterhead. Um it's, it's something that, that DHCR e- expects to see as far as the plan goes, but I think we could we could change that, that, that letterhead if we wanted to.
I just didn't know if I needed to leave it as is, you know, that part of it like that. I didn't know if that was, because i- in, in the subject line, title line, it does say Town of Batavia, but the top of it does say Homes and Community Renewal. And I didn't know if that was a requirement, maybe I can even reach out to Harry.
It, it
What do you suggest?
Yep, an email to Harry with, with the top of it means fine. I think we could do, we could go either way.
Okay.
Um that what, from my perspective, what would matter is, is the body of the policy.
Okay, okay. And we're just doing it like that, not by local law, it's just Section Three plan, correct?
I, I think a resolution is fine, it's very easy to um change in the future. Yep, but we do have, we, we do have practice of adopting these by local law as well, it's completely uh up, up to you all. Just know that anything adopted by local law would need to be modified by local law.
Right, yep. Thank you.
Thank you.
You bet. Any other questions for me on that? Or anything else for that matter?
You're muted, Greg.
I just wanted to thank Andrew for squeezing us in this evening, I very much appreciate that.
Anytime, very happy to do it.
Yeah, thanks, Andy.
I usually, I, I try to have my uh board meeting nights, it's always on my calendar, your board meeting nights, in case you want me to appear, but um now that we're in Advent, it's just a little tighter, tighter for me, so thank you for your understanding.
Thanks for your help, Andrew.
You bet all.
Thank you.
I, I will, I thank you for now, have a great evening.
Okay, you too.
You too.
Thank you. Bye.
Bye.
Yeah, I'm driving, Sharon.
I was wondering.
What are you off for? Family Going by.
Family stroll tonight, Paul?
Oh, yeah, just out driving around, you know.
I seen your wife in the back, too.
Yeah, did you see her?
Yeah.
She's in the back?
In the back because she's in the backseat, I'm driving Miss Daisy tonight.
Oh, okay.
All my hunting stuff is all in the, all in the front seat. All piled up.
Oh, Kathy, who's important there.
Yeah. Bringing them out, Teresa.
The deer hunting stuff comes first. All stacked in the front seat, I'll switch it, switch it back. Uh the reason why I'm on the Zoom meeting tonight, if it's a good time.
Sure.
Yes, no?
Come on.
Yeah, I'm
Go for it.
Okay, I just, I just wanted to update everybody on the new fire station, too.
Good, yeah.
We are within probably two weeks of opening, once we get the, our certificate of occupancy from the town. Um because of the COVID situation, we would like to have the town board invite the town board to come down for a walkthrough. Um we are going to try to do an open house in the spring, but because of the whole COVID situation,
Yeah.
we felt that we should wait.
Yeah, that's better, I know.
Yeah, we figured we'd uh do an open house and like a ribbon cutting and all that in the spring once everybody is able to get out in social distance a little bit, hopefully it'll all be over with by then.
Yeah, right. Let's hope next year. Next year this time, maybe.
Uh, I don't, boy, I hope not next year at this time, we're all in trouble if that's the case.
Yeah.
Big trouble, you know.
Everybody's got to be vaccinated.
Yeah. That's, so that's, that's, that's what I wanted to update the board on.
Very good news.
Nice, good.
I was by it the other day, it looks very good, Paul.
Yeah, from the outside, I saw it too, it looks beautiful.
Yeah, so um look forward to uh, look for an email coming through for an invitation. Uh when would be a good night to do it on, would you want to do it like on a Wednesday night?
Yeah, it's fun.
It's up to Greg, well, he'll be
You might also keep it on a Wednesday, that's generally when you guys meet.
Yeah, you've been a couple of weeks yet, right?
My Wednesdays are blocked out, so.
A couple of weeks, probably just before Christmas, we're imagining.
Yeah, twenty-third is right before Christmas.
Yeah, that might be a little close.
That's kind of
Probably just after the first of the year.
Yeah, it's kind of holidays.
Yeah, okay, all right, I just wanted to uh let everybody know, we'll, we'll shoot for, just after the first of the year, then.
Okay.
Then the trucks, trucks will all be in there and uh then we could give everybody a walkthrough.
Sounds good.
Okay, that sounds good.
Can we get a ride in the truck, is that possible?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we can, we can arrange that.
Yeah, oh, yes. It's enough room for us, I want one truck.
There is no touching the siren or the
Ah, never mind.
Uh we have to hold, we gotta do something. Fourteen years and twenty million dollars, I still don't have the gizmo to make the light turn green, I'm not too happy.
Oh, I know, there you go, Greg, that's always fun.
That was, that is kind of nice, that is kind of nice. All right, well, that's all I had to say, so I am done for the night.
Thank you.
All right.
Have a good night.
Paul. You're welcome, you all have a good night, thank you.
Drive careful.
You too.
Oh, yeah. See ya.
Yep.
Bye.
Bye.
Bye, Kathy.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Any other business uh that needs to be transacted? I did want to mention that I got a, a, a voicemail that I've lost, somehow I got, it got lost in the interruption of service over the last month and uh I think there's an email back there, too, that uh they identified our community as only one of three towns in the entire service area that three plus one um acknowledged has had a uh a hundred percent effective or a five-star rating on investments.
Oh.
They're only um and it's interesting because Genesee County uh was acknowledged and Scott German was acknowledged as a, you know, the leader on a, on a national ranking and as far as I know, um when they listed the other communities that had been recipients, um there were only three townships listed and the Town of Batavia was one of those three.
Wow.
So cities, counties and, and communities around the United States, um it's, it's it's an extraordinary achievement um for the staff that's involved in, in making sure that every single penny is invested and that uh we're getting the best and highest use of the dollars. Um and, and the best news is that it's all been locally invested, we haven't sent any of it out of the, out of the Town of Batavia. It's all been invested with local banks and it's been relent and re-spent with the, our communities uh participants and businesses. So I want to thank you all for your support in enlisting this and, and for supporting the uh additional work that it, that it's taken for our staff to do that, but the dividend is, is that uh it's just a really good advertisement for our community. it's just a really good advertisement for our community to the national, international site selectors out there. Things like that you can't buy. You just can't buy the kind of acknowledgement. And to be one of three towns in the United States that has been recognized for that is a testament to all of your diligence and all the work and the time that you spend working collectively with us. So thank you for that. If there's nothing else, I can't wait to get back to New York State so I can go into quarantine.
Yeah.
Actually, I, I did get to spend 30 days in the United States.
You'll be able to get a lot What was that? You'll be able to get a lot done for Joan, then.
Yeah, I'm guessing.
Yeah.
It's interesting how different, I mean, I, I was, I spent 30 days in the state of Wyoming, and it's a small town. And there are just no regulations out there. They haven't put out, their health department strongly recommends masks and mandates. In the stores, I went to a grocery store in Cody. Because every week, every week I make a new pot of soup for my dad. There is a gentleman there with a big box. So there's, there's just cartons of these big wet wipes, disinfectant wipes. Every cart is wiped down. Everybody wears a mask. The aisles are, the aisles are marked. Everybody is respectful and does their part in containing this. They're in the same kind of situation that we are. It's just simply expected to be personally responsible. And you see very few people ignoring these rules. It's as if, they don't have to be mandated. People are smart enough to get it and do what they have to do. And they all wear guns. Everybody's got guns. Everybody wears a pistol or is at least one. It was, it was just interesting that everybody's pretty polite, and it's a whole different character out there. There are very little influence of government over personal freedom yet.
It's way to the
Everybody was, everybody was extremely collaborative in making sure that they were safe. It was quite a different, quite a different attitude. I was very much benefited by it.
Nice.
I had to stop on the road two nights ago for at least five minutes because there was a 2,000-pound bison blocking the highway. And I couldn't, I couldn't get around him. There wasn't any room. He just stood there. He just chose not to move. He just looked at me with one eye. And he's, you gotta look up at him. They're, they're pretty tall. So I'm hopeful not to run into any of them on the, on the rest of my journey. They don't show up good in the headlights.
Okay.
Well, if there's nothing else, then I'll sign off and get back on my journey.
Hey, drive safe.
Drive safe.
Yeah, safe travels.
Take your time.
Okay.
Night, everybody.
Good night.
Thank you all.
Night, Greg.
Thanks for everything.
Safe travels.
All right.
Bye.